Four town council meeting for Thursday, July eighth. Roll call Jake.
Councilor Eastman?
Here.
Councilor Morrison?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Visonin?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilor Ormsby is absent. Councilor Downs?
Here.
Councilor Rankin?
Here.
Next slide is the presentation of town council recognitions. We do have one tonight. Councilor Downs?
Yes, um, thank you very much and welcome everybody here in the chamber and in TV land. I would like Rich Roteller to come forward, please. And I would like to read this sentiment to you from the state of Maine. And it says, "From state of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the senate and House of Representatives, join in recognizing Rich Roteller, of Bucksport, recipient of a Spirit of America Foundation Award. The Spirit of America Foundation was established to encourage and promote volunteerism, and the foundation presents awards to honor local individuals, organizations, or projects in appreciation of community service. We extend our congratulations and best wishes, and be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forthwith on behalf of the 130th legislature and the people of the state of Maine. It is signed by the President of the Senate, Troy Jackson, and the Speaker of the House, Ryan Fecto. And it is introduced by myself, Representative Kathy Downs, and co-sponsored by Senator Kimberly Rosen."
Yeah, sir. See, some things we don't put on the agenda for a purpose.
Congratulations, Rich.
Uh, next is considerations of previous meetings. We have town council minutes from six twenty-four, twenty-one.
These were not in your packet and they will be for the next meeting, so if we could pass over those.
Yep. Uh, receive and review correspondence. We have the writer's report of May twenty-twenty-one. Um, and Sue has information on the nomination for life-saving award. If anybody saw the write-up in that, that was from our second newest officer, um, on the job for...
Less than a week.
A week. And, uh, hopefully read Deputy Chief Winchester's, um, report that's been sent in to the Maine Chiefs.
Maine Chiefs Association for Life Saving Award for their work in, um, regard to this saving of a person who was on the bridge and in distress. And so, um, it's been forwarded to the Maine Chiefs for, uh, as a nomination. And when we hear back the results of that, either way, we will be doing a recognition here at the council level as well.
Well, by all accounts, you know, first, first week on the job and she handled herself very well and, uh, yeah, the people that were there did too, so thanks. Um, next slide is ordinances considered to introduce. Uh, we don't have any, um, waterfront committee update from tonight. Is Luke still here or... If he, if he, that's okay, Rich, if he's not.
I think he is.
He had all the notes. You were just writing all, everything down, Luke, so I'm gonna put you on the spot. How's that? Uh, just a quick update on what the committee talked about and what our next steps look like they're gonna be.
Uh, we're waiting to hear back from some of the engineering firms that I contacted. Um, hoping to walk the waterfront with them. I've got one set up already to do that on the twenty-seventh. Um, we'll walk the waterfront and hopefully get a proposal from them on, uh, what kind of expenses will be to do like a master plan for our waterfront, five-year goal type of thing. With an emphasis of first year of being to repair Hoffman Point and in behind Irving, where the rip rap is really bad. And we talked about some, uh, smaller stuff that we can, you know, the low-hanging fruit, I guess you put it, that we could, uh, attack this, this year. And so we, we've got a little list there that we're gonna tackle and that's about it.
I think we, we gotta, we gotta path forward anyway, so...
Yep.
I think getting the engineer report will do well for us. Any questions? All right, thanks. Uh, next is Amoresco Solar Project.
We've got a PowerPoint presentation. Is there any way to, uh, put that up on the screen?
I bet there is.
Should be all adjusted already.
Thank you, Luke.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah.
Thank you, town council members. Appreciate you guys having us and reconsidering, um, a matter. I'm Rob Jackson with Amoresco. Uh, we're the developer of the solar project. Um, Panops got Narrows Solar Project up there on River Road, um, on the former Verso property. I'm here with my colleagues, um, John Mancini, our Senior Vice President of Solar Development. I have Brian Rayback with T-R-Satwood. Uh, Luis Alagria with Amoresco. Tom Daniels with TRC. And Mark Christopher with TRC as well. So, uh, we apologize for not being here at, at the last town council meeting. Glad to see you guys, uh, in person, uh, at this point, uh, under different circumstances, uh, being vaccinated at this point, so we're, uh, traveling across borders now. So, uh, feels pretty good to be here and, uh, thank you for listening to us. So, uh, just a little bit about the project. This is a five-point-five, uh, megawatt DC solar system. Uh, over, originally it was over a thirty-seven acre, the thirty-seven acre property. Uh, after some basis of design information that we got from the field and TRC's work, uh, we made some adjustments and this is, uh, the layout as it stands at this point, with all the proper setbacks and, um, limited tree clearing and, uh, outside the wetland constraints that are on the property. We, uh, so now, you know, it's about a twenty-acre footprint, um, about six-point-six kilowatt, million kilowatt-hours, uh, near one. We have a, a lease agreement in place with AIM Recycling, who's the landowner on the property in the adjacent landfill. Uh, has been involved in transactions with Whole Oceans, uh, that you folks are very aware of. Uh, so, uh, a partner with, with the town. Uh, we do have an interconnection service agreement with Central Main Power. Um, and, uh, we have most of the permits minus, um, this contract zoning, uh, request and the NERPA, uh, filing that we expect to, uh, receive in, in the next few weeks, sometime early August. I'll let TRC kinda jump into the plan a little bit more, but, um, this does show, um, where the wetlands are on the property and as you can see, most of the wetlands, you know, cover about half the property there. So we, uh, designed it in a way that would be outside those wetland constraints. Uh, there is a, a minor, uh, impact to the wetland that we're going to work with the state to compensate for, um, about hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in compensation for that, that impact. But for the most part, there's little impacts to, to the wetlands there. Here's where we stand at this point. We expect to have local permits by next month, hopefully, um, and begin procurement this fall, commence construction later this year, um, and be online about this time next year, uh, after construction and, uh, getting, uh, procurement and design, uh, ready. So it's pretty well advanced. Um, there have been some questions about the, you know, how, how this project will benefit the local community. Uh, we budgeted about five-hundred thousand dollars in pilot payments, although, you know, this, this project is tax exempt, but we've, um, committed to, to provide those pilot payments over the life of the project. We understand that, you know, uh, because there is potentially some lost revenue, that that could be recovered from the state, so that would be a, a diff, uh, and, and a, uh, additionality to the pilot payments that, that we're, uh, providing. We also been in the conversations with, with the town, um, extensively about providing the net energy billing credits. Um, we can probably, you know, provide up to a twenty-five percent discount on what you're, you're paying there. So we look forward to advancing those discussions. We've had conversations with RSU twenty-five. They're interested, they're very, uh, interested in this meeting and the outcome tonight, um, and whether, you know, um, we would apply the credits to their accounts. Um, we all know about the environmental, uh, aspects. Uh, we own and operate the system for the life of the project. Um, there's nothing that, you know, the town would need to do. We, you know, we, we would do everything. It's, it's basically just revenue to the town. And, you know, we look forward to, to exploring some educational opportunities with RSU twenty-five. You know, we can put, uh, monitoring and dashboards to help, um, you know, educate the kids about renewable energy and how it, how it's, um, you know, how it produces energy and how it all works. So with that, um, I'll turn over to Mark to talk a little bit about, um, contract zoning and some other, uh, considerations that we've talked about.
Yeah, hi, town council. I'm Mark Christopher with TRC Engineers, uh, from Augusta. And obviously, we're here tonight because of a contract zoning issue. And it's a pretty, to me, it's a pretty unique issue, uh, relative to town, town approvals. And I've worked with Luke for several months now on our, our planning board approval and, and helping to get through this process and I definitely appreciate, uh, his support. And kind of how we came about with the contract zoning issue is that, and a lot of times towns we find that solar projects are, they're, they're kinda unique. They don't necessarily fit into the exact zoning categories that people have contemplated over the years because these community solar projects are, are fairly, fairly new. So with the project that, uh, the property that Amoresco is considering, it's a R-15, uh, residential commercial zoning. And, and as most folks probably realize that in, 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 uh, Bucksport, we have, uh, a zoning category for power generation. That's considered to be an industrial use, which wouldn't be allowed within a, a residential commercial district. You guys also do have, uh, a, a solar definition, but it pretty much applies to using solar panels for the owner or the user of the property, where you can only have enough panels to cover the, the use needed for that property. So the project essentially falls kind of in a, in a limbo between, it's really not an industrial project necessarily. It's really more of a commercial project, but according to the town's definition of, you know, power generation, it falls on that industrial, industrial side. So that essentially brings us to the, to the topic of, of contract zoning and an opportunity to look at, at a project like this and consider it more for its, its values as opposed to, uh, putting it into a category that maybe it doesn't exactly fit in. And so this, so again, this is a, a unique, uh, opportunity. And, uh, so we're hoping that, that the council will, will look at the project for, for what it is and the value that it can bring to the town, as well as how it will fit in with the, um, with the community. Go back real quick. So when we, when we came to the planning board, we came here twice and we had very good reception from the folks there. Um, they were very good to work with. They asked a lot of very, um, very thoughtful questions, had a lot of very thoughtful comments. We had, had a good back and forth discussion on both the issue of the, um, of the conditional use application, as well as the contract zoning. And I thought we, we came away with, uh, you know, a, a good discussion. We got a unanimous vote on, on both issues. Um, so it was a pleasure working with the planning board and, and working with Luke and getting us to this, to this point. Now, the issue that i- i- has come up that we, that we've heard about and we understand that the property was part of the adapt plan and that it, there was some consideration on a, on a conceptual basis for what was called workforce housing. Now, you know, we, we've talked to AIM and, you know, their general take on it from a, uh, a construction, a practical standpoint, as well as a financial standpoint, that they're not interested in, in a residential development. And that's probably a pretty good thought because when you consider the extent of wetlands on the property, as well as, um, let's see if I can get back here. All the areas in blue are wetlands. And as Rob was saying, about half the site is in, is in wetlands. In the southern part of the site, with a sort of a triangle-shaped piece, is fairly steep topography. So from a residential standpoint, I think you'd have a pretty limited opportunity to put houses in there, plus the cost of bringing in sewer water. And just the general construction cost would be, would have been pretty significant. So i- it doesn't surprise me and I, I think it's fairly, fairly good economics that it's not a very good site for, for residential. So from AIM's perspective, this is a very good opportunity to make some use of what I would consider to be scruffy Maine woods, uh, former agricultural land and put it into something that has value to, to them financially, as well as to the, to the community. So basically, there's a number of reasons that I've listed there in, in terms of some of the thought processes for, for not pursuing, uh, residential. And, and as Rob was saying, and he was a little, little bit low on the number, um, in terms of mitigation, and we do have wetland impacts to the tune of, um, compensatory mitigation for our DEP permit and our core permits for about a hundred-and-sixty to a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. And I think if you were to try to do a, a residential development out there, because I've been doing wetlands permitting for about thirty-four years, you'd be looking at probably a quarter of a million dollars or more for mitigation fees if you tried to develop out there. It'd be, it'd be a very difficult site to build something like, like that. I'll get to a little bit more on that here in just a second. So the contract zoning, again, it's, it's an opportunity to look at a, at a, a project that doesn't quite fit in with your zoning categories and look at it, at its merits. But I think the other side is to look at, well, what could be built out there, at least in terms of looking at zoning, looking at regulations, looking at what could be approved as a conditional use and would be consistent with that, that current zoning. So my original application for the planning board and then the little letter that, that we sent out a couple, three weeks ago, we went through and I looked through a number of the different categories that would be allowed. And it's pretty encompassing. I mean, you've got everything, a variety of educational, healthcare, housing, residential, uh, lodging, municipal, professional, seasonal. It's pretty extensive what could be built up there. And I, maybe physically it would be difficult to build some of those things, um, just as I was saying, with, with the residential use. But all those, all those uses would produce a lot, produce their share of traffic. Um, they would produce their share of noise. Um, no doubt they could add value to the community, but again, how would they fit in with the residential, the residences that are there on Drake's Ave and, and on, on Route fifteen? And these would all produce a lot more traffic, a lot more visibility, um, than a solar farm. And that's one good thing about a, about a solar farm, whether you like the way they look or not look, they are quiet, they don't generate traffic, they don't require, you know, municipal services per se. So from a land use perspective, I think it's very reasonable to say this, that a small solar farm is a good neighbor and an unobtrusive neighbor. And the, the client has committed to a pretty robust, um, landscaping plan, uh, that was considered by, obviously by the planning board. Uh, considered a fairly substantial amount of preservation of trees along, between Drake's lane and, and the project, as well as looking to, uh, relocate a large rhododendron, um, hedge that, that's on, on the property, all in an effort to reduce the vis- the visual impacts. So with that said, I guess my, my, kinda my final conclusion thought is that, you know, we think it's a reasonable use of the property. It's a very, actually a very good use of the property. We think the contract zoning, given how this project falls within the town's definitions and the zoning regulations, is a very good opportunity to bring a, a project like this into the town that will have, have benefits to the town and fit in with the, the current land uses and the homeowners. And that's another consideration is that when we went through the process with, with the planning board and with our DEP permit, because we had to do a public notice and a public meeting for DEP, we really had no opposition from, from the adjacent landowners. Really, the only issue that came up was the rhododendron hedge that, that they've addressed. So it seems to me that the folks that are, that, that live there, that would be the most directly impacted or could be, um, haven't come out and said anything negative or been, been against the project, which I think speaks a lot to how people see solar and, and what their, you know, what their thoughts are, how, how it will affect them in a pretty positive statement. Um, so that's all I have to say and I don't know if Amoresco folks have anything they wanna chime in and as well as questions, you know, we're here to, to ask, to answer questions that if anybody has, has...
Anybody in the council, any questions? Uh, just, just up front, we're not gonna vote on this tonight. Um, that's, that's not gonna happen.
I see. Okay.
Okay.
Understood.
Um, we're, we're, we're here as a discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Are you closely asked to have a discussion after our initial vote?
Okay.
But we are not gonna vote on this again tonight.
Okay.
Um, if it's, if, if at the end of this and the council wants to have another vote, it'll be at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, my first question is, could you go back to that where you said that, uh, this was tax-free or could be taxed or can you explain all that to me, please, again?
Yeah. Uh, you know, by statute, the, uh, you know, th- this type of development is tax-exempt at this point, but, um, we, we have committed to, you know, a pilot payment, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, um, and over the life of the project. Um, we understand from the state legislature that there is, um, going to be pilot, uh, some sort of tax that's gonna be required at some point and we budgeted for that, even though it's not required right now. And we would plan to, you know, pay that five-hundred thousand dollars over the life of the project to the town, uh, in spite of, you know, any tax exemptions at this point.
So right now, we, we have a promise from you that you would be giving us five-hundred thousand dollars over the course of time.
That's correct.
And, uh, this town runs on money that comes out of my pocket as well as the rest of people that represent me.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know whether it was gonna have an impact on that.
Understood. Yep.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah.
I have a few questions. Bear with me.
Okay.
Um, are you gonna have a performance bond?
Yes.
What do you mean?
As, as like a de-compressioning bond, is that, yes?
A performance bond, so we are guaranteed what you say you're going to do in the contract is what's gonna be done.
Correct.
Okay. That's, um, a, a really big, huge concern of mine, and I'm gonna be right up front, is what is going to happen after these panels expire? I have heard they're gonna be put in the landfill and buried, but they don't decompose.
Right.
So you're gonna have, for the whole state of Maine, thousands and thousands of these panels that seem to gonna be expiring at the same time because it seems like all of a sudden, all these panels are appearing everywhere you go.
Yeah.
So what are you gonna do? Have you got money set aside to take care of the, the recycling and the dispositions?
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, direct that question to our Director of Engineering, but, uh, I, I think there is a, a plan to recycle. I mean, you know, most, most of this, it is, I mean, you know, we're a thirty-year project, so, uh, who knows what happens in thirty years? Maybe we can just grind it up and, and magically make it into something else. I, I don't know what's gonna happen decades from now. I think our plan is to have it recycled, though. Most of the array is steel and I don't know what's left, because a lot of steel is on the components inside, but Luis, maybe you wanna add something?
Yeah, sure, sure. Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, these, these panels, I mean, initially they had, um, right now they're, what I call, as you said, is landfill safe, right? They could put in the, in the landfill, if you want, but we don't want that. I mean, what I want, we are working with several companies to really extract all the materials from those panels when they, when, when the life is, is ending twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. So the panels are made of, uh, basically glass, aluminum, uh, some copper. All those materials are recyclable. So that, that's the plan, really. We are not planning to put them in a landfill.
So what happens when all this other elements come out of the panels? Like you've got lead, you've got...
No, there is no lead. There is no lead.
And, and things, this is what I have read. I have researched.
Yeah, the panels used to have leads.
And there's this cobalt stuff too that comes out of it.
No, the panels don't have any, any hazardous materials anymore. Um, I've been in the industry for twenty-two years and of course, they had, ten, fifteen years ago, they had lead in the sodas or the cells, but not anymore. Now it's silver, uh, and zinc and, and nickel. So there is no really hazardous materials and it's all plastic, which is, uh, the EVA, the, the, uh, the back material is, is standard plastic. If the front is glass, the cells are glass, basically silicon is glass. The cables is copper, the frame is aluminum. So e- pretty much everything is recyclable at this point and there is no hazard. That's why they are landfill safe, because before you could not put copper, lead into a landfill.
Because I have that concern, because everything that I have researched, and I even talked with people today that could not answer those questions. And that's why I have these questions and, um...
Yeah, yeah, the, the process of manufacturing the panels have been evolved through thirty, forty years of solar industry. And at the beginning, as I said, they had some lead, was minimal, but still had some until fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago. Not anymore. There is no, there is zero hazardous material.
Cause I even, I even read not just the panels, but the windmills have the same thing. The batteries, the electric batteries are coming through that have the same stuff in them that what I'm talking about.
Yeah, they, they, they are different.
So, I mean, and, and I'm really concerned about the land underneath. A lot of this land that's being taken up is farmland. And what's gonna happen after thirty years of these panels being on the farmlands and all this solar stuff is hitting it? Environmentally, are you gonna be, ever be able to use that land again for farming if you take these panels off?
For, for sure, yeah.
That's what you're telling me, but what I'm reading is telling me totally different that the research and what I've talked with the gentleman today.
Well, uh...
That, that, that's concerns I have.
I, I know. I, hopefully you're, you're looking at a, at a truthful, uh, resource.
And I have to tell you, the information that I got is what I've seen that you presented on a, on your point today.
Yeah.
And I've researched all that information. I have the exact same stuff that you put up there, but I have more that the questions that I'm asking that I'd like answers to, because if I don't get answers and they couldn't give me answers, I'm sorry, but I can't vote for this.
Yeah, I mean, we can provide you the answers and the studies that show, I mean, and how the manufacturing, we can even, uh, there are different manufacturers of panels and we, we, we had to pick, I mean, we work with maybe three or four, uh, worldwide manufacturers. We can show you the exact process, all the materials they use on the panels if you want.
I would love to see any information you can provide me.
Yep, certainly, we can, we can provide you with all the materials used in the panels and the process, so you see that there is no chemicals, hazardous chemicals. The other thing is that the panels are, it's a sandwich, so it's really sealed. So nothing leaks, nothing evaporates, nothing, I mean, it's, 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 it's just, it's just glass and plastic and it's pretty sealed. So, um, through thirty years, I mean, all the studies have shown and there is no, there is no leak from, from the panels. The water that goes or hit the panels, so there is, there is really nothing, nothing going out from those panels.
And my name is John Mancini, I'm with Amoresco as well. Um, thank you for having us here.
Thank you for having us here. I just wanted to also just step in and just answer one thing that I haven't heard us answer yet, or, you know, and then I'll make a point as well. As far as like us being involved long-term, or how does this site get cleaned up 30 years from now, 40 years from now, 20 years from now, wherever it may land, we post a decommissioning bond. So at the very beginning of the project, we post a decommissioning bond that the town holds, and the town would hold that in case our company or the project went bankrupt, or 30 years from now, then there's going to be, you know, we pack up and leave, we have to clean up the site. And if we don't, you have a bond from us that you'd be able to...
Exactly, that's why I asked if we have the performance bond.
Yeah.
That's very, very important, that the town holds that.
And there's a decommissioning bond that's applicable to us cleaning up the site. So we would have that, the town would have that, we would post that before we operate the project. And then just on the point of farmland being converted over to solar projects, completely understand where you're coming from, but there's actually a project in the state that just made the news, I believe last week, and it's a blueberry farmer who has solar panels over the blueberry bushes. So it can coexist, solar with farming activities. And it's very big right now in Massachusetts, it's moving up this way into Maine, there is a project that is in the press, it's down in the Portland area, I think it's in Scarborough, I'm not sure. Brian, if you know that project?
I'm checking the blueberry project.
That's correct. It's in Rockland, I'm sorry, so that's up in this area. So there is, there is a site that is coexisting between solar and farming, so it can coexist.
So you're saying the panels are all of the blueberries, and that we're going to be eating the blueberries?
My understanding, I'm not sure on that particular project, but there are blueberry bushes coexisting with solar panels. But beyond that, there are 30 or 40 different fruits or vegetables that can grow underneath panels, and this is happening right now in Japan, in parts of Europe, where, you know, Massachusetts, there's a site that's existed for five or six years out at UMass at the agricultural school, where they've put this to the test. So this is a new movement that is happening, and, you know, strawberries, mushrooms, hops for beer, those are some examples, squash, there's a project that actually, yes, there is fruit and vegetables growing underneath panels, and they're coexisting.
I would love to see what those panels are made out of.
And those are the older panels. And those are the older panels, yes. But on your, just to answer your question too on that, we can provide almost material data sheets for those panels prior to us, you know, we could do that even before now, well before we build. Town of Bucksport, this is what we're using, this is the material, these are material sheets that the panels and the equipment is made of. And this project will not have any batteries, so there's no batteries on this project at all, so there wouldn't be anything associated with any of the chemistry involved with batteries, and there's no cobalt as well.
So what about the vegetation underneath the panels? How, you can't use herbicide under this stuff?
That's correct, we would not.
So what are you doing to keep them clean underneath?
We just go twice a year during the growing season, just move them, just with a regular machine.
Yeah, we just move them.
There is no herbicide or anything like that.
Okay, another question. This is Maine, okay? We don't have a lot of the sunlight, you know, you have gloomy days, and you have nights, and they're not getting, at the nighttime, they're not drawing in the sunlight of the How is that going to be effective? I mean...
How does the project work based on limited sunshine here?
And then you get the snow in the winter, you get the snow built up, and all this and that. So, you know, I'd like to know all those answers.
Yeah, everything is calculated, we have a software that estimates the sun through the, all the seasons. Actually, we have more sun here than maybe Germany.
Yeah.
And Germany is full of solar systems everywhere, really high north. So we, I mean, you use the energy you have. So in Europe, just to give you an example, it's about 900 kilowatt hours per kilowatt. Here, we have at least 200 more, 110, 1100. So it's more energy here than in Germany.
So how much money is going to then put to the consumers to have to pay?
The consumers for the solar project?
For, for the energy that goes on the grid. I don't know how it all works, but...
So we pay the power company to actually put our infrastructure on their infrastructure, and we upgrade the lines and poles.
But don't the power company have to pay something for that?
No, we pay them.
No, we're paying them. Yeah, we upgrade the area for the infrastructure, and then the power that's generated, we sell that to, it could be the town of Bucksport, or it could be the school system, and we pay, and it's usually a discount, you know, somewhere in the 20% range off of what the, the 25% range of what they're paying right now for electricity. So it's actually a benefit to the consumer, and a benefit to the town or whomever is buying the electricity from us.
So does that mean that the consumers are going to get a credit on their power bill?
If we were doing a community solar project, then yes, they would, yes. Yep, so, you know, part of that, part of what we do is we do community solar projects as well, where we offer the community a discount, and it goes down to the residents, that's correct.
But that, that's not this?
I think it depends on if we're selling the power to the town or the schools. If not, it could very well be this, yes.
But as it stands right now, it's not?
As it stands right now, we haven't made up our mind.
Okay.
So when are we going to know that? When you make up your mind?
Well, it all depends on, I mean, we could make that decision, if that was a condition, we could make that decision, absolutely. But we're, we just haven't made up, we usually go through the permitting process first, and then we figure out where the program is. So we've offered up the electricity to the town, and the way the rules work here in Maine, it has to be one or the other. You can have a certain portion of your load being sold to the town, and then the other portion being sold to the residents. So it's either 100% residents, or 100% would be town, or small commercial, or school system, things of that nature, so.
So these panels, since when have you changed over to be used in plastic, and supposedly there's no elements that's going to hurt the property?
Just like, I mean, it's similar to the windows you have in your house.
Yeah.
They are as clean as the windows.
I would like information on that, please.
Yeah, sure, no, we could provide, manufacturers, they produce a material list, and we could certainly provide that. You know, I think we mentioned that there's three different manufacturers we typically buy from, we could offer one from each, and then when we go to build a project, it could be stipulated that we have to use one of those that meets this criteria.
So you're putting in 13,208 panels, and it's only, it can, was it 626 homes it could provide solar to?
Right.
So where is that solar going to, to provide that?
Well, it goes on to, well, that's just an example of how many houses that it could power. So the, you know, the solar when it's generated, it goes on the grid.
Right.
And then the, you know, CMP uses that, you know, it's pretty much probably gets consumed locally. But then it becomes an accounting method as to where it goes. That's how we're able to sell the power to the town under a net energy billing contract.
So as the years go on, that's going to decrease?
Solar panels have a...
Yeah, it's a 0.5% increase per year.
It's about 0.5% per year. Yeah, that's pretty standard around all manufacturers, that's correct.
And the panels are guaranteed by the manufacturer that after 25 years, they will produce, before was 80%, now it's going up, I think it's 82, 84%. So it's, the degradation is there, but it's really slow.
So, you know, so the technology's getting better.
So it's not like 5% after so many years, and then another 5%?
No, no, it's 0.5, not even a 1%.
Not 1%, yeah.
I think, let me see if I have any other questions.
No, 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 these are great questions.
Yeah, yeah.
So will you be putting money aside then for, when it comes time to removal?
Correct.
It will not be up to the town to have to dispose?
The town will hold the decommissioning bond, and can call it on us. And, you know, Amresco is a publicly traded company, we've been around for 21 years, we have an office in Portland, and employees, just under 100 people, I believe, we have 1,200 employees throughout the country.
And so my understanding, you're leasing the property, you're not buying the property?
Correct.
So you have a 20-year lease?
Correct.
But you can extend it twice?
Twice.
So five years.
Five years, so you can extend it for 10 years?
Correct.
Okay, I think I've answered my questions.
If you have any other questions, feel free to ask or send us an email.
Okay.
Or we'll come back and answer more questions, we can come back with more information as well.
And like I said, you've had a public hearing, and all the neighbors except for one at the public hearing, had said anything.
If you wanted a rododendron removed, yeah.
Relocating.
That's what I'd like.
Yep, so we're relocating it. And if it dies, we'll plant a brand new one.
Thank you very much.
No, any time.
For the answers.
Yeah, if you have more questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other council members? I've got just a couple. Net energy credits, doesn't matter where you have the solar farm, and those are going to the grid, and they can be sold anywhere.
Just within CMP's territory?
Or Versen, whatever, but they, yes.
Just CMP for this project, it has to be within the...
For this project, but in the other solar farm.
If we had one in Versen territory, then we would sell it.
Right, but this could be, this could be in the Portland area, and the net energy credits could still be, we could still buy those net energy credits from the company here, correct?
Correct.
So that has nothing to do with, true with the solar farm being in Bucksport.
As far as the...
As far as the location and the net energy credits, those do not, it does not matter where that solar farm is.
As long as it's within the load zone, that's correct.
The CMP zone.
Load zone, that's correct. So we could, in theory, I think where you're going with this, we could sell the power from this project to somebody in Portland.
Or you could put this in Portland and sell it to us.
And sell it to here, correct.
Right.
So if you're negotiating with somebody that has a project in Portland and wants to sell you the power, then we should talk.
Secondly, AIM has been here for years. They have told us upfront that they are not in the development business. So for them to say that they've done research and stuff like that, I don't take it any further than what they've said. They've, they are not in the development business. They are in the purchase of buildings and materials to take it down and then get rid of the land. So for them to come and say that they've done an extensive search, or whatever the words were, is, I put zero faith into that. Thirdly, I find it offensive for Mr. Christopher to get up there and tell us how our town should run. Maybe we want traffic, maybe we want people here. That should be thrust to the side, not for, not for a company to come in and tell us how, how we should do it. I just, I find that offensive for folks to tell us how we should do things. Lastly, with the contract zoning, I would ask all the members, if you haven't, to start with the April 6th planning board meeting online, watch the three planning board meetings. The contract zoning is required, their rules say that they have to approve it if there's nothing that says they can't, and then it comes to the council for a decision. The contract zoning is not for them to debate, it's if it meets the rules, then they have to approve it. And then it comes to the council to decide if we want to do. We've done it in the past with Haas Property, and we made some changes there. And I'm not going to refer anything, but please watch the planning board meeting to listen to the questions and comments from the planning board members, especially in the April 6th meeting. And I think you'll, again, I'm not going to refer anything, but I just, I leave it up to everybody to listen to that and watch that meeting. Does anyone from the public like to have anything to say?
I do.
Could you, Doug, could you come right up to the front so they can see you on camera, please?
You on camera?
Yes, sir.
Don't worry, it's solar power.
No, my name is Doug Alec, my wife and I own property down at the very end of Drake's Lane. And I think we're probably the biggest residential of Bata to the project. And I guess some of my questions is, what was you talking about lost revenue?
Lost revenue?
So what are you, what are you asking, Doug, as far as lost revenue?
Well, the boys had mentioned that there was going to be lost revenue by putting this project in.
So right now, we have about $2,000 worth of tax revenue that we get from that property.
From that property?
From that property, from AIM.
From AIM.
These projects are tax exempt, but these folks are going to, in lieu of taxes, give us somewhere $20,000 probably?
It's about $13,000 a year.
$13,000 a year in lieu of taxes.
A year?
Yep.
And also, the lifespan of the project around for 30 years?
That's what their contract would be for, for 30 years.
Well, what do you do after 30 years? You disassemble the...
We just decommission it, yeah, like we were speaking with the council.
So Doug, what they is, is they give us up, basically, just like AIM did, they gave us a bunch of money upfront that if they don't complete the project, or they leave, or when it's time for it to break, we hold, we hold a certain number to be able to pay for that.
Okay, well, why wouldn't you just continue the project?
Well, I mean, it's kind of related to the duration of the contract, so the net energy billing program, it's, you know, a 20-year contract, and so I don't, we don't know what will happen after 20 years, so we put in two options to extend, and maybe we continue to operate, you know, but the initial contract's 20 years.
There is a chance that you keep it going?
There's a chance, yep.
No panels and so on?
Yep.
Depends, depending on the intrus on, yep, and then decide at that time to continue it.
Well, and the, and there's no storage to that, it goes directly into the grid?
Goes directly into the grid, no batteries or anything, yeah.
Well, I guess I'd state for the record that unless keeping the place natural the way it is, I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You can get off the camera now if you want to.
Thank you, Jesus. Camera shy, you know.
Anybody else from the public?
Hi, I'm David Weida, and when I came to Bucksport in 2003, I moved into 22 acres of beautiful land on Williams Pond that was 3,000 feet away from the closest source of power, conventional power. So we immediately looked into what we were going to do, buy a lot of poles, bring poles down the road, or go with solar power. My outcome was solar power, and I was thrilled with it. I'm here to advocate for solar power, not for any particular project or company, but to answer Kathy's question, nothing made me happier than to go down in the basement and look at my monitor and see how quickly my panels were charging my system on even an overcast day. You know, the concern that Maine is dark and cloudy and rainy. My longest period of never turning my generator on, I did have a backup generator for those stretches where if I had a full bed and breakfast with three rooms full of guests, and there was a lot of power usage going on, if I had three cloudy days in a row, then I'd be using the generator. The longest period of time I went without turning that generator on was over two months. So there's plenty of sunshine in Maine.
I don't think anybody's debating solar, we've got solar in the town that we use.
Oh, that's what, well, that's, the concern is that Maine isn't appropriate, you know, for, for solar power, and that's, that's what I'm speaking to, is that I charged quickly. I was charged to 100% by noon on most days, summer and winter.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Anybody else? How would the council like to proceed? Do you have a motion to reconsider? If we...
If the council wishes to have this brought up for another vote, you would ask me to put that on an agenda for the next meeting, where you would then make a decision on whether additional information has changed the initial vote, which is why there's not a resolve on tonight's, tonight was a discussion, and it's the council's decision whether to put it back on the agenda for another vote, so that's why it's set up the way it is.
I'd make a motion to put it back on the agenda.
Second?
Any motion in second? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails? Thank you. Next item, agenda items, first is Resolve 2021-01 to accept the bond anticipation note interest rate for year two and three of the road project. Motion approved?
Second?
Motion to approve, and second, any comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resolve 2022-02 to set the mill rate soon?
I'm asking the council to not act on this resolve tonight. The school will be receiving additional funding, they will have their information out by the 12th. So prior to the, so by the next meeting, we'll have an accurate number for the education line item that can be reflected in the budget with, by doing a budget adjustment, so that we're not raising more money than we need to. And the other reason... I'm asking the council to not act on this resolved tonight. The school had, will be receiving additional funding. They will have their information out by the 12th. So prior to the, so by the next meeting, we'll have an accurate number for the education line item that can be reflected in the budget with, by doing a, a budget adjustment so that we're not raising more money than we need to. And the other reason is that if you read Caitlin's monthly report, you realize that the first half of the COVID impact, which is what I'm going to call it, on valuations in the community through property sales hit during our last period when we were reviewed by the state. And our valuation compared to the state's valuation has dropped from 100% to 95%, which reduces the amount of homestead and other state-related by that 5%. And if, without the offset of the lower education, I would be asking you to use some of our, the money we'll be receiving for lost revenues through, through the federal program in order to offset that 5% so that our mill rate can remain at 1625 and we don't do what some communities have, have been doing, which is adding a factor to everybody's valuation by 3% or 4% in order to offset what's happened to property values based on sales. I'm not an advocate for that. I think we're in a, I think we're in a period like this and I think everything levels out eventually. And I think we should, would be better served to not do drastic changes to evaluation, but perhaps use a small amount. And when I say a small amount, less than $100,000. And if the school is going to have more money, it, it's very likely wouldn't need to use any. But this year and next year, we're going to see this impact on, of what property sales compared to what we had them valued at, are selling for in Bucksport and have been during, during this COVID period. So, long explanation, but it will be on the next agenda with an adjustment to the educational budget line item to reflect what our actual cost of education is going to be for next year, which is going to be significantly lower than it is this year, based on the fact that the legislature's actions through the budget reduced the local share necessary to fund education. So, stay tuned. It'll be on the next agenda, but with the goal of retaining the 1625 mill rate and not impacting fund balance or anything that, at any greater rate than we had already planned to do.
So we'll see it next, next meeting?
Next meeting.
All right. Resolve 2022-03 to accept the 2122 local road assistance funds in the amounts of $64,208. Council like to proceed? Motion approved?
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resolve 2022-04 to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of Bucksport and the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition for the 2021 to 2023 years. How would the council like to proceed? Motion approved?
Second.
Have a motion of second, any discussion? This is just a continuation of what we've done the last time, right? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. 2022, a resolve 2022-05 to approve the application for a general obligation bond for the three-year road project. How would, can just get a motion then. How would the council like to proceed? Motion approved?
The, the purpose of this is that the, the approval for the bond, the bond anticipation note interest rate is to cover the year two and year three construction cost, at the end of which we would convert year one, two, or three into one general obligation bond through the Maine Bond Bank, which is where we can secure the lowest rate of interest, particularly as we head forward because interest rates are going to change, or it's anticipated that they're going to change. So to take advantage of the low cost during this construction period and only paying interest on what we use, when we use it, the 1.41% interest is an excellent rate to do that with. And then by November of '22, this allows the town to apply for a loan through the Maine Bond Bank that encompasses all three years of the road project that would be paid back that way.
Questions?
Counsel Morrison, second that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resolve 2022-06 to approve the bid from Gardner Concrete for retaining wall replacement. How would the council like to proceed? Motion approved?
Second.
Have a motion of second? Hope everybody saw the bid.
Yes.
Okay. Came in, nice job. I don't know if you twisted somebody's arm or...
We, we actually lost a wall in the process. I could not get return email, Facebook, phone call, nothing from the, from the tenant. So it'll be the four, just on Main Street, that we're originally going to do. So Gardner did the work at the fishing pier, at the town dock here. They do a great job.
Do we, and I'm just looking to remember, do we think that, that one wall is somewhere north of $100,000 to fix if we ever did get it?
Yeah, yeah. And there are other walls on Route 1, so we can call that the Route 1 project. Call this Main Street, Route 1. Then you've got Central Street, you've got Franklin Street, baseball field walls.
Will this take care of our, our?
This will take care of Main Street, our, our most pressing ones. Yes.
All right. Anything else?
This is the 50% grant. 50% of this cost is recoverable from the grant that we're receiving from DRTs.
Correct. And we can include the engineering from Oren Associates, which is not figured into that, that figure you have there.
Right, right, right.
But we'll lose the rest of the grant. If we do get approval, say next year or the year after, for those other, for the other wall.
It may look good that we were fiscally responsible and didn't try to do something that probably shouldn't.
Keep, keep the money in our pocket.
Yeah.
But, but I think to Richard's point, there, there may also be other opportunities for other grants at that time too, so.
We have been encouraged to continue applying for these grants for this purpose.
Yeah, it's about a two-year cycle. So meaning you apply for it this year, you got to do all the work the next year, and then you do the project the following.
Okay. We have a motion of second? Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next one is resolve 2022-07 to accept the grant for two EV chargers to be located in the town dock parking lot. Council like to proceed? Motion approved?
Second.
Any comments from the council?
I do.
Yeah, hang on. Yeah, go ahead, Kat.
Where are they going to be located at the, at the docks?
Yes, to make this project work, because I remember when the council had a meeting at the beginning of the year when you went over your goals, that EV chargers were not on the plan for this upcoming year. And working with Revision Energy, who we partnered with for the solar panels at the town garage, they made me aware of a grant through Blue Hill, Mr. Beck. And by putting the two spaces right by the, the restrooms, the red buildings, it's closer to the electric. We were able to get the electrician and the two, the, two EV chargers at no cost to the town. For, everything will be reimbursed there. The cost that you'll be looking at is painting of the lines and signage, which is, which is minimal. The, the hard part is that it is two spots at the town dock by the electric that we need for events. So I leave it to the pleasure of the council.
What they were saying, we're responsible for keeping maintenance for five years.
That's correct.
What, is there any projected, do these things have problems?
In, in my studies and with the one that's been in town, there have no, nothing that I have seen that causes those to go on.
We're looking at the same thing at the school from the, from the same company and, and we've asked the same questions and, and we haven't found where there'd be any, any major.
So they're pretty, the longevity is pretty good.
Yeah, I, I think anything, what you see is like the same thing over at the, the one by the House of Pizza is the, the parking needs to be repainted. But those two spots have to be for the solar. You'll, you'll get people who'll park there. I don't know who will enforce it. No one enforces it down the road. So, yeah, it's the upkeep, it really would be the painting. And if we can get the town dock, if we can get that whole thing all paved, then it'll look good. But, yes, that's, that's the upkeep I see. Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Now, are we paid for this electricity that's charging these up? Or how is that, it says in there that it's up to us to make the decisions.
Yes, the council can make the decision. You can have one of two ways, where the consumer pays the power or the municipality pays the power. The EV charging station that is at Powerwise is paid by Carsten Steenberg, the owner of Powerwise. So it's a free, so.
We're, we're okay. We're, we're going to have it for the school. Folks can use it there at the school, but it's going to be open to the public and they're going to pay. So you can, you can, because I think it's networked, you can.
Network, yes. They have, they have to be networked, so you'd.
You can do both. If you have certain, I mean, if we ever got electric cars here at town and we want to, you know, use the town for that, and then we would decide that we wanted to charge, I, I think that's a decision we can make in a, at a future.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I could use, you would embarrass, but like you meant for shit, so I could get some gas on my vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess I, what I would ask, and thank you, Counsel Morrison, what I would ask is if, if this is something you would like to approve, if you could add that you would either like it to be networked or no pa, no cost to the consumer. If we can make that change.
I, I, I think the place to start is we start with a network, see what the usage, see where we're at, see what the, you know, if folks are using it. And then we can look down the road that if it's a true benefit, you know, we may end up adding more of these and, and have one or two that, you know, we, we bite on, so. Everybody okay with that? Start with, start with paper, paper, paper gas.
It would show you the power that is costing as well at the same time.
Correct, correct, correct. Yeah, because I think it's all, that network piece, the way I understood it, it's all, they basically generate reports can tell you how many people, how, how much people are using, what we're using for.
Yep, there's a website, sort of like what we have for the solar panels that we have and we generate. You can get a website that will tell you how many people are using it, where they use it. Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
You're, you're a baby breath, young man. Come on out, I can see you.
Hi, my name's Stephen T. Peter Jr., the owner of EV slash solar for Bucksport Maine. If we approve this, this is going to be monumental. How many chargers would we have between Olin and Bucksport Rich? Would we have four if it was two, or maybe three?
There's one here, there's one at, according to the EV map that there is, there's one at Trade Winds. And there's a couple out back of Olin as well. I don't know those exact locations.
There is a growing demand for EVs. I actually talked to a young couple here in Bucksport that just ordered a Volkswagen ID.4. And, I mean, there's more and more people buying used and new EVs. As a matter of fact, I, I've been looking at research and people that install EV chargers in towns actually see an increase in foot traffic. You can go to get ice cream, walk the waterfront, eat at a restaurant while you're charging. And, I mean, you look at California, okay? They've got $6 a gallon now. And that's going to be a ripple effect here in Maine eventually. A lot of people are sick and tired of the high gas prices and they look to, you know, save money by going electric for like their trips and stuff like that. And they just announced today that the Ram pickup truck will have an electric pickup truck soon. So there's going to be a lot of electric pickup trucks, minivans, school buses. Eventually, there will be electric ambulances, fire trucks, police cruisers. And this is a well-needed and awesome thing. I've got several of my, members of my group here with me, if they would like to also chime in. This would be great for the town. This will show that we definitely are about electric cars, solar and stuff. And I'll let it, I'll let everybody else talk.
Thanks, Steve.
I didn't know how official he was going to get. Sorry, I've been looking at my phone, but I, I can't retain everything I want to say. So.
Could you just give your name too?
Oh, yes. My name is Derek Cole. I'd like to speak in support of accepting the grant for the two EV chargers. I say let's get on this as the number of EVs, electric vehicles hitting the road continues to grow. Whether you like electric vehicles or not, they're, they're on the road. It's happening. Stephen pointed out that pickup trucks, buses, everything, it's going to be converted, it's going to be the, the way of the future. And I think this is a good start. And the fact that we're now discussing possibly free, correct, that we mean by in network, that the, the people using the charge?
We're going to start, we're going to start off with pay.
Okay, well, good. That's even better. Why not get some money from it? I agree. So, yeah, no, I mean, I think just building the proper infrastructure for this is very important. And, you know, we have been noticing a lot of people traveling through town looking for chargers. And why not stop here? Why not turn left, get onto Main Street and pump some money into our local businesses? You know, average charge is maybe two hours, maybe three. That's a lot of time and potentially a lot of money spent here. I'd also like to thank Stephen for standing up and asking for the consideration of electric vehicle charges numerous times. I know that he has actively spoken to a lot of you, as well as a lot of town employees. Stephen is very passionate about it. And I think it's really important that we recognize passionate citizens and bring them in on projects like this. And again, I just urge you to seriously consider this move. Don't know if I'm breaking a rule. I'm a little disappointed about the solar decision. I think that we need to send a message to the state that Bucksport is open and willing to move forward and try new things. And I think energy is a very good, important thing to focus on. I know that as a father of two young children, it is a big concern of mine, the way the climate is changing, whatever terminology you want to use, it's happening. And we really need to think about our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just to, Derek had a good point of turning left at the bridge for this. We assume we'd do signage or something?
Yeah. So we've got signage over there. Most of it's new, the bottom part's not. So the sign with the black railing, the Public Works crew painted all that and everything looks great on there. The thought is, we know there's ATMs here. Or, or take something else out, but really specify EV charging stations and free public restrooms. The stuff that really will get people to turn. I mean, it sounds silly, but I mean, that stuff really does bring people.
It would work, yeah. Anything else? Motion, we had that already, correct. Jake, we had a motion of second right yet. All those in favor? All right. Number nine is resignations, appointments, assignments. We got reappointment of Dave Grant to the Planning Board till 3:31, 2026. How would the council like to proceed? Motion approved?
Second.
Comments? All those in favor? Motion passes. Approval quick claims and deeds. We have non-town manager report.
I actually found my own this week also.
It's two in a row.
That's two in a row. So then, I didn't spell that right. Now Santa Maria is docked at the town dock from today through July 13th, and tours will be available while it is in town. Today, a person slipped on the gangway going down to the town dock on the way to do an inspection of that vessel and was injured. It was in nearly low tide and the ramp was wet from the rain, although there are cleats on the gangway and railings on both sides, the ramp was shut down for staff to evaluate the situation during this rainy period. But had, they have done that and it has since been reopened. And I don't know if anyone's noticed, but there wasn't a parking place to be found in Bucksport for most of today because there were so many people in the community to see the, the boat, which was nice. The Marina sustained some significant damage during the storm last week with breaks in two sections. Mike, Bill, Jessica, and Rich have worked pretty much around the clock to get a new section afloat installed on C dock and made repairs to the end of the main dock as well, so that all boats that formerly were located in those areas could get back to their seasonal slips and we could reconnect water and electricity and get them off the town dock in time for the arrival of the cruise ship on the 6th and then this, the tall ship today. We have submitted an insurance claim for these damages and are waiting to see what the coverage may be. We also lost two large trees on the waterfront during the storm and they have been cleaned up and removed by the Public Works Department. A tree from the Wilson Hall property fell into Oak Hill Cemetery during that same storm. And Public Works is working to remove as much as they can, but will be getting a crane to remove the larger portions. And we'll have to access it from the Wilson Hall property. There was significant damage to 12 or more stone. it from the Wilson Hall property. There was significant damage to 12 or more stones, and we will be getting an estimate for repairs to those as well. The legislature passed a bill that allows for remote meeting participation, but allowing it must be adopted by individual communities, and there are some restrictions that have to be included. If there is no objection, we will prepare a draft for the council to consider that could be added to our council rules that would allow remote participation in meetings in some instances. The fishing pier project was completed on time and within budget. Gardner Concrete did a great job on the project, and they also, at no charge to us, removed the very large tree that had fallen into the brook next to the Swirl Concentrator Building while they had their crane here, um, which was, um, we had had a plan to have it removed when a, a tree at Buck Cemetery will have to be removed, um, with a crane, but this saved us on the cost of that because they offered to do it for the wood. Um, we met with First Light, the Three Ring Binder owner, today about the possibility of Wi-Fi along the waterfront. It is one of the items that has been discussed in several of our plans and, and broadband funds or ARPA funds that could be used. Um, we'll be putting an item on the agenda for July 22nd for permission to apply for Connect Me grant for some of the funding for the project. And I wrote this before I got the information from the company on what the monthly charge would be for internet, um, costs from First Light to support this project, which is about $36,000 a year beyond the almost $200,000 in capital cost. And so I, I need to take a look at whether or not you're gonna see a Connect Me grant on this in the next, but that's, because that's a large bite for that one area of the community. And if it can't be, we'll see how expandable it is or, or, you know, or what other uses could be done that might make that kind of an annual expenditure for Wi-Fi on a seasonal waterfront walkway worthwhile. So anyway, that, as I said, I wrote that before I got the email that said how much the monthly bill would be, and that was, that was an eye-opener.
Was the $200,000 to get it here?
The capital cost. A, a 180 odd, but that didn't include the labor to install. That, that was stuff. Um, I also, um, would ask, um, Counselor Downs if we could schedule a cemetery committee meeting, um, to discuss 917 River Road plus Oak Hill Cemetery, um, when you have a chance. And finally, um, at the end of July, there will be a couple here from, who, um, he's a journalist for The Atlantic, and she is, um, a journalist, and they've won Emmys for documentaries, et cetera, but they're coming to Bucksport to learn more about the community. Um, the Orton Family Foundation, who sponsored Heart and Soul, suggested that they come to Bucksport, um, to see how this community works. And, um, so they will be here, um, the 26th, 27th, Monday and Tuesday. And they will be on our waterfront and staying in our hotels and eating in our restaurants and visiting with people. So I'm, um, really excited that we've been selected again for that. And, um, I received my information and my tickets.
When are you, when are you going?
I'm the 28th to the 30th. I'll be in Salt Lake City. And, um, I had a Zoom meeting with the other two people on the panel that I'll be speaking on about, um, local government response and the pandemic. And, um, I'm really looking forward to it. This is gonna be an interesting...
Is that going to be streamed somehow, do you think?
I, I believe it is. The podcast that I did is available still, so. The podcast is what got the invitation to speak.
Go to Ruth while you're out there.
What's that?
Go to Ruth while you're out there.
Okay. That's right. You just came back from Salt Lake City. That's it.
All right. Any questions on that or any of the other department head reports?
What are the journalist, uh, names?
Journalist names?
Um, fair, hold on. I will tell you. What did we do before cell phones?
I know, right?
Remembered things?
No.
What Paul said.
No, no, I, no, that's aimed at me. I used to be known as the encyclopedia of phone numbers and stuff. Well, if you need a phone number from 1986, I'm your guy. Um, other, but now, no. The machine does the work.
Yes. Deb and Jim Fallows.
Thank you.
He's a, she was a Pew Research Fellow. He's, has a, won an Emmy for a documentary.
Awesome.
He's a writer for The Atlantic.
Great. And the dates again, Sue?
The 27th and 28th. Uh, no, 26th and 27th, David.
Thanks.
And I'm setting up times for them to meet with people, so if you have an interest, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, next is public hearings. First, we have a public hearing on the fees, ordinance, update, ambulance lift assist only, fee reduction to $40. Open the public hearing. This is, uh, we've discussed, uh, last time, and I think everybody agreed this was the right number, so. Any questions? Well, we, 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 uh, was, what did we do, Jim? We, we gave in maybe a little bit to that number?
I don't know.
Right? Right. Um, any questions?
No.
All right, close the public hearing. Public hearings closed. Take a motion?
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Take a motion of second. All those in favor? Opposed? So be. Second is a catering permit for Ronin Wine &amp; Zine on 7/12/2021. Take a motion?
I think a motion is approved.
Take it. Take a motion of second. Any comments? So I know Sue sent out an email. Um, when do they need something by? Pretty soon, probably, if they...
Today's Thursday.
Yeah.
It's Monday, so, yeah, tomorrow would be great.
All right. Um, just one way to respond to Sue's email and that. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next discussion is on the agenda for the council, the public. We'll open it for the public. Anybody in the public have anything that's on the agenda that'd like to talk about?
I do have one.
Oh, Rick.
Oh.
Yeah.
Little bit of TV time tonight. Um, so, we're part of the four main roadmap, uh, with MDF, basically one of the former mill towns. And we've got a local housing steering committee. Um, what they requested was a, uh, someone from the town, a former counselor, uh, Mayor Keen, former Mayor Keen, a realtor, George McLeod, and a banker, Del Brizinas from Camden National Bank. Uh, we had an orientation on June 4th, and we had a follow-up meeting with this, um, uh, a steering committee that they had set up as well. And when we met, they asked, you know, what, what were we looking at? And, and a lot of things came out, especially speaking with the, um, contract department or SGO about the law. We had conceptual of what we wanted. And, and we're kinda thinking the same thing with the 27 Main Streets. So instead of doing that, what our group had decided is we're gonna actually have them come to town, and I believe it's on the 27th of July, and we're gonna walk 27 Main Street and for vi, for viability of projects on that property. I think that'd be the highest and best use of its property that we own. We don't need permission. Um, of course, the council has to grant permission to sell it, but I think that's the highest and best use of this, which is no cost to the town whatsoever.
Thanks. Anybody on the council of anything?
I do.
Yes, Cap.
I just want to recognize that Don Houghton and Sandy Holmes, um, of the Buckswood Enterprise also received the Spirit of American Law from the Senate and the House of Representatives. It was mailed directly to them. I was only a co-sponsor, so I didn't get it. I felt bad about that. But I just wanted to recognize that they also received it.
Thank you.
And one other thing is, um, I had spoken with Sue about this, about the tennis courts. Um, and I just want it to be, um, since this person completely delivered this to my house and spoke with me about it, I just want him to realize that I have brought this up. Um, he has concerns of the tennis courts and would like to have it, um, redone or something done. So I just thought maybe we could put it on...
Are those ours or the schools?
The tennis courts are ours, and it's listed on the, um, rec committees to do the list.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. I'm not sure if you guys get, um, I think this packet had an update from, from Matt, but I'm not sure in the past, 'cause I did miss this month's meeting with him. But I, that's on there, quite a few areas that need some improvements.
I just wanted this person to know that I did bring this up and...
Absolutely. Thanks.
...it being worked on. Thank you.
Anything else?
The remainder of the paving, um, we, there's a binder coat on Millvale. It's not the final coat, and the road edges are not done, um, but will be. The, um, the other, the five miles of paving that we do annually, that, that and the final coat on Millvale will done, be done close to the end of July is when that work will be done.
Thanks.
Uh, upcoming committee assignments. I know you want to have a cemetery committee.
Yes, yes. Is next week a good week?
Yep.
Because the following week, I think I'll be back in August.
Yes, you will be.
So Thursday?
Thursday.
Nope. What's good for you?
I could do Tuesday.
Tuesday? At what time?
I could do any, pretty much any time Tuesday.
Okay. I have appointments in the morning.
Do we need a week though, to...
Oh, right.
Oh, no.
It needs, I'll need to post it right now. It's gonna be Tuesday, only because...
Do you wanna go the following week? Oh, no, you're gonna be back in August.
I'm probably in August for the following week.
I could do Wednesday.
Wednesday? That's fine.
That'd be okay. I posted it Monday and Wednesday. You have me in Wednesday. It'd be okay.
Wednesday? Okay. What time's good for you?
Can we do mid-morning or something? Eleven?
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
We do that, Jim?
Wednesday. Add a little...
Do that later?
Okay.
And then we talk about waterfront, but we're gonna hold off until Luke has, gets some information, so we probably won't set that up until, um, next week, the next meeting when we can get some information, so. Uh, the only other thing I had, and, and Deputy Mayor Bussner and I talked, on August 12th, I, I realize it's a couple meetings away, but I'm unavailable, um, he's unavailable. Is, uh, okay with the council if we don't meet that day? Do we wanna wait till next meeting before we, until we have coming up? Um, it, I, I don't, it's people on vacation, stuff in August a lot, so I just didn't know if we wanna, oh, we had to do one meeting in August, or we can wait till our last meeting in July and then see where everybody stands?
Yeah.
Do you wanna do that, or?
I think that would be good.
Okay. We'll, we'll hold off then and wait until the July meeting, so. Thank you.
I'll put that on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Because, yeah, I can be available. It would be a lot easier if I didn't, if we...
If you didn't.
Yep. To be 100% clear, if there's a need to meet, I will be available, so.
Oh, I have one more question. Um, on that resolve...
Which one?
22-01, who give on the anticipation law.
Yep.
Um, I do know that some of Matias and Camden has combined, 'cause you had Matias here in Camden National.
I changed it.
Oh, okay.
Someone brought it to my attention that I may have not used the right name.
'Cause I do know that some of the branches are and some of them aren't. I was surprised.
No, it, it's Matias Savings, and it should, it, the, the changed resolve that got reposted.
Okay. I guess I didn't see that.
And I fell on the sword and said I didn't type that right. But, yeah.
All right. Number 15 is adjournment. Motion adjourned. It's second. All in favor? Have a great night. Thank you, everybody.